Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, July 13, 2020. We welcome those of you in our new surrounds at the DeKalb Public Library. This is our second meeting here, and for those of you watching on TV or YouTube tonight, we welcome you also. Just a reminder for anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda tonight, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, kindly fill out a speaker request form there in the hallway coming into the meeting room here today, and we'll try to get you on. I would ask those folks who have signed up to try to keep your minute, your remarks and your comments to about three minutes, okay? With that, our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, is not able to join us tonight, and our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, will be conducting our meeting, so Ruth, I would ask you to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finnoukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight, present.
Thank you. Would you kindly stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The agenda can be approved on a motion and a second, and but before that, we want to ask if there are any additions or deletions. I would have one deletion. I would like to remove my appointments, item F, the appointment of Joyce Depezja. I'd like to remove that from tonight's agenda. Are there any other deletions or additions to tonight's agenda? Alderman Morris.
I would move to delete, I'm sorry, I don't have the item number yet, the contract for approval for the water tower. Item five, thank you. I would like to move to delete that.
You'd like to remove that?
Yes.
From consideration tonight?
Yes.
Okay, since these are two different items, I think what we'll do is have a separate vote on either, on both of these individually. Any other deletions or additions? First of all, I'd like to have a motion that we approve the deletion of the appointment of Joyce Depezja to the police pension board.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finnoukin, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finnoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the deletion of the painting of the water tower, D5, as requested by Alderman Morris.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to move that?
Yes, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that we remove the item of painting of the water tower. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask, since there was a bid process here, and this was brought forward for council review, that the council can do a number of things. The council can table this, looking for further information. It can reject all bids if it chooses to do so, which I believe is within the bid docs as a right of the council. But if it's just removed, then the question I have is what, what do we tell the bidders? Is there another action pending or coming, or how does that work?
Sure, I apologize. I amend my, I amend my motion to table this pending further understanding of the background of Seven Brothers painting.
So we would be removing it from the agenda tonight, tabling it for another meeting? Is that correct?
Correct, thank you.
Alderman McAdams, is that okay for your second?
It is.
Everyone understand then what we're trying to do here? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finnoukin.
No.
Smith.
No.
Perkins.
No.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Morris.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, that motion fails, so we will keep that on the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of the appointments.
Thank you. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by.
Second.
Alderman Perkins. Any discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
No.
Finnoukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes.
The agenda is approved as amended. Thank you. We now move to item D on the agenda, public participation. There are a number of online letters to be read, but I think because of the courtesy that I'd like to extend to those who are in our audience tonight, I'd like to go ahead and see if those folks would like to speak now. Again, if you prefer not to speak now, if you'd like to wait until another item on the agenda, that's fine. The first person is Mark Charvat, please. Try to keep your limit, comments to three minutes or less, please.
Regarding the item from the agenda that you just voted to keep on the agenda regarding the water tower painting, a couple of observations about that. It's been brought to my attention that the city of River Forest paid $280,000 for their tower painting, the same project as DeKalb, the same company. DeKalb is going to pay $734,000. Can you do the math? Almost half a million dollars difference. I think Alderman McAdams and Morris are correct in that this needs to be further, some further investigation needs to be done upon this. In addition, more importantly, there are some issues with this company regarding safety and the death of one of its employees. We need to look into that. There's this thing, I think Rachel Maddow calls it, the Google machine. You might want to try using and doing some research on this. It's a shame that some of you Aldermen do not do any of your own research on things. Some do, and it's just sad that you guys just look at the material that you're given without conducting your own research. Use the Google machine. It works great, by the way. Regarding some of the comments at the committee of the whole, and this is something I know Bessie and I have discussed before, regarding our fantastic committees that we have, the HRC, an incredible commission that we have, a simple resolution in reference to allowing the public access to our committees would be something like publishing a link on the website, contact the committee, and sending your concerns. Or you could have email addresses for the committee members. You don't have to publish phone numbers, I know that's not required, but a simple email doesn't seem like it's that hard to do, or contact us, where you could submit written comments to these committee members. And I do agree with what Mr. McAdam said, each HRC recommendation deserves an up-down vote. The committee put a lot of time in assembling these, and I think it's important that each council member weigh in with an up-down vote, make an amendment to it. If it can't be done, like we said in the earlier meeting, you can explain that. Regarding Zoom meetings, it was just amazing how many people participated in the HRC meeting a few weeks ago. What do we have, like over 100 people on that meeting? I've never seen public participation as great as we saw there, and I'm always hearing lip service from this council saying, get involved, talk to the committees, go to a meeting, attend a meeting. You had over 100 people on this meeting, and now we want to get rid of it? Until this COVID stuff is done, there's going to be a lot of people who are concerned about coming out to council and being here in person. Let's keep the Zoom meetings going. Public access. We may disagree on issues, but I think most of us, at least I hope most of us, agree on public access. With that in mind, I know there was this talk at the last meeting about having a further meeting to discuss a lot of the recommendations that the HRC put forth, and I know the council didn't have a vote, chance to vote on it, but before the workshop, this is a perfect opportunity for each and every one of the Aldermen to have a ward meeting. You can do it virtually, you can do it in person, or a combination of both, but now it's the time for you to hear directly from the constituents in each of your wards regarding the recommendations at the HRC. Why not do it? You can do it online, you can do it in person, or a combination. Don't be frightened to have a ward meeting. I know some of the Aldermen have promised quarterly ward meetings, and some have promised to do it on occasion. Let's have one now. All the work that went in by the HRC, let's not just throw it away, not, let's not put it on the back burner. Find out what each of your constituents think about these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bessie Chronopoulos.
Okay, I have a couple, a couple.
Yeah, pull that mic down, Bessie. Can someone help her there? There we go.
I got it. Sure, people, what can I say? I wanted to speak at the other meeting, but I really was more looking forward to listening to what council had to say. That is, the Cow meeting is so important for you all to exchange, and I was very happy to see that. I heard some very good things. There's hardly anything that I heard at that meeting that I can't say that I really, you know, am very much in favor of. A lot of good things were said by many people. Here's what I, I had two main things to say, A and B. So let me start with A, which is in regard to the meeting. The ball is in your court, council. There's, there's no question. The ball is in your court. This is a momentum that somebody had mentioned. There's a take advantage of the momentum that is before us throughout this country to move forward for justice and equality. I mean, that's a wonderful opportunity. It's a wake-up call for all of us. We have all learned so much, as some of you have said. The HRC, please continue with your good work. At one point in time, that body was a quasi-judicial board, which did hear civil rights complaints. This was years ago. I don't know how it's evolved over the years, something to look into. Phenomenal work that they did, many, many hours spent. The BLM movement, those young people, please stay involved and get even more involved. I love seeing that enthusiasm. They've got so much to learn about the process and procedure, but they have such wonderful passion and so many beautiful ideas that they want to bring forward, and that should be encouraged, and I thank them for moving forward. The citizens who stepped forward, unbelievable amounts of citizens who just took the time to write things and send and share and, and with each other and with the community. Phenomenal. I've always said, Mayor, you and I have had many talks, the greatest advantage that we have in this community is our greatest resource, is our people. No question, bar none. And I'm also going to say that I am a fan of the police department and the fire department. As one very wise soul told me once, I somehow have a great deal of respect for someone who's willing to take a bullet for me, and someone who's willing to go into a burning building to save me. So there's an inherent respect there for those who are out there in public safety, and they do work very hard in the community, and we do need to take all the good things out of that and bring them forward. There are programs that are in place that, as somebody had mentioned, the police department has worked on over the years, and there are some good programs, and I think we need to look and take those ideas and enhance them with some of the new ideas that we were just listening to tonight and throughout this whole process. Programs that would involve not only the DeKalb Police Department, but the county, the judicial system, the social networking that goes on throughout the county. There's a lot there. And the two words that I will probably, given this a lot of thought, is coordination of all that we have, the new and the old, coordination of all those ideas, and putting them into motion, putting them into, putting them forward, and then the secret will be to monitor those, to make sure that they are working and to be able to evaluate them over the years, to see, are they working or are they not working? And then part B, these are just miscellaneous points. Some of them I got as I was rolling up here to the meeting. This building is hard to get into. I don't care what you tell me, Mayor, it's hard to get into, period, end of conversation. I had just one lady tell me that. She says, this is terrible. I go, tell the council, don't tell me. The alert that went out yesterday and today, thank you. Thank you, PD, wherever you are, for putting that out. Believe it or not, two little older ladies, of course, I'm not an old lady myself, just beginning, called to say, hey, wow, did you get the alert? That was wonderful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I wanted to pass that along.
You're well over your three minutes.
I know. Zoom, Zoom for all. Please use the Zoom, Zoom. Just because I don't know how to use it really well doesn't mean that the rest of the world doesn't. So, and some contact information for the HRC and other community boards and commissions. It's real important. Give them a nice generic email that they can have so that they can get input from the public. Think about it, council. Keep up the good work. Keep talking. It's in your court right now.
Thank you, Bessie.
You betcha.
Okay, our next folks who would like to speak, Sharrestha Singh and Eric Ogie.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm going to take my mask off just for this, because otherwise I'm very soft spoken. So Mayor Smith, council members, city manager, good evening. Thank you for the chance to address you this evening. We meant to come to the 5:00 PM meeting, but we ran a little late, so I'm glad to have this chance now. I'm Sharrestha Singh, I'm a resident of DeKalb, moved here about a year ago. I'm finishing up my social work degree, and this is my husband.
Hey there. I'm Eric, I'm a pastor at the Federated Church in Sycamore, and, you know, my first city council meeting was actually last fall when Reverend Joe Mitchell addressed you all, giving his, his moving words about Alonte McDowell arrest, about the chokehold, and the plea that there be justice for all in this community. And I just want to start my remarks by saying that as long as Officer Reese is on the force here in DeKalb, what we are saying is that black lives don't matter, not as much as a police officer's life, not as much as his job. That's, so we can say black lives matter over and over and over again, it's a thing, but until something substantive happens that says that instead of symbolic action, black lives don't matter here in DeKalb as much as a police officer's job. And so we also just wanted to take a moment to address the changes of the comments from the report that city manager Nicholas shared with you all. And he mentioned, you know, we were heartened to see the changes which you all discussed, but that there would not be a change in, in funding, a shift in funding from the police department unless there was a significant reduction in crime. And that unfortunately, it is not true in DeKalb that a high percentage of police calls are in response to the needs that can best be met by non-sworn personnel, so we need to keep those officers. And I just want to say, I think that those statements go to show what I just said, which is that the, the, the statements that members of our community, that BLM leaders have been asking for, are not being understood, that we are asking for deep transformative change, not technical change, not rearranging the chairs. And so I'm asking you to consider that maybe we are not fully understanding what they are asking of us.
Right, and so we realize that this is just the beginning, but I want us to understand how far we have yet to go. And so there's two statements by our city manager about not reducing funding unless there's a decrease in violence, and that it's not true that a high percentage of police calls can be met by non-sworn personnel. I wanted to address that, not because, not to demonize you in any way, but because you have great responsibility in overseeing our budget and our personnel. And so to address those statements, I created a breakdown of the calls that police respond to in DeKalb, and it seems that if I read the document correctly, and I know I'm going to go a little over, pardon me, it seems that 5% of what the police respond to, 5%, are things that include homicide, sexual assault. About 18% include things like battery and deadly weapons, and the rest, which is an overwhelming 77%, include services for the community. So helping businesses, checking car seats, behavioral health issues, well-being checks, helping someone whose car got locked in their car, dealing with landlords and tenant disputes, intoxicated individuals, suicide threats, and all kinds of other things. And because of those numbers, I don't quite understand that assessment, that violent crime, which is a low percentage of what the police respond to, although I'm sure, like, deeply intense and jarring, of course, is what is keeping us from reducing the police budget.
Sharrestha, you're well over your time limit. Could you try to wrap it up?
There's two of us. Thank you. And so, yeah, that statement, I don't quite understand it. And the statement that non-sworn personnel cannot meet much of the 77% of what police do, that clearly does not necessarily require specialized police training. And in fact, having a team of unarmed persons who are trained in social, mental, emotional, community health and well-being would probably be incredibly helpful for that 77% of tasks, as well as the other ones that we've mentioned. And that requires more than hiring one part-time social worker. And I'm going to make two more points, that the violence in our city is not going to be curbed by having a giant police budget, which seems to be the claim here. And I know that it feels counterintuitive and scary to say that, but it's very important for us to understand this. Researchers have shown that having a large police budget and police force does not reduce violent crime, and in some places, it makes it worse. In fact, between 1997 and 2016, law enforcement shed jobs due to recession, and our country's population actually grew, and the national violent crime rate dropped by 37%. In different cities like Memphis, Tennessee, which is a place with a notorious police force and a problem with violence, between 2017 and now, they decided to tackle the problem by hiring more police to different departments and by adding police funding. And violent crime went up by 2.4%, and those cops ended up getting burnt out and ended up leaving their jobs anyways. And so I invite you to do that research yourself. But basically, sorry, research shows that informal social controls, things that don't include police and courts and prisons, are much more effective at curbing violence in our communities. And there are programs in which forces of community outreach workers, counselors, mediators, social service providers, EMTs, are the first responders in our community, not the police. And the police assist them when needed, or, or are working mostly on addressing violent crimes. And the research actually shows, and there are programs in Chicago doing just this, but the research shows that this works, that having local organizations and informal groups mediate and de-escalate conflict, work with folks who have health problems, support those struggling with poverty and addiction, mental illness, those who've been victimized, in places around the country, including New York, LA, Minneapolis, they have shifted millions of dollars from the police budget to social service programs, and these are places that have worse levels of violence than we do in DeKalb. So we don't really have an excuse to not make those changes as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Sharrestha. Thank you for math instructor Charvat. Three times two is six, isn't it? Okay.
I didn't get a chance to put a request in. Is there a possibility I could do that?
Speaker request forms are right outside here, Mr. Hallgren, and give that to Ruth Scott. Where's Ruth? Right over here next to you, and we'll get you on. Vivian Mead, hi Vivian.
Hi, my name is Vivian Mead, and I'm one of the organizers for Black Lives Matter. I know I'm going to go over three minutes, but that is perfectly fine. First off, the agenda, this shouldn't be about George Floyd's murder. This should like, this should not be it. We came here a year ago about Alonte McDonald. So let's get that straight. This isn't about George Floyd, this is about Alonte McDonald and our community that Officer Reese used in illegal chokehold. Until he is fired without pension, my life, as long as the other black lives in this community, do not matter to you. Housing issues. Why are we only going with Hunter Housing? Why not Mason Properties? Jim Mason is a racist. He refuses to sign leases to some international students. We know what he does. That is not okay. If looking at Hunter properties, we need to look at Mason properties, as long as the other properties in this community. I don't see anything about the common lease in the agenda, and this was not discussed at the last, last HRC meeting, and I know that the common lease is what many people in this community want. With the budget, I do not understand why crime data is being used with budgeting. It's not, tool is kind of messed up. And also kind of the crimes that you pointed out, the sharp rise of intimidation and sex offenses are worrisome. What kind of language is that? But you guys aren't talking about the use of deadly weapons has gone up by 17%? Also, you look at sex offenses as going up by quite a bit, but you're not talking about the nine to one cases that went down, less than eight, went down eight cases of meth offenses. That's a lot. We need to, we can't use COVID as an excuse for the budget. We know COVID's happening, but we also know that change and reform needed to happen a really, really long time ago. We also need to address stop and frisk, and we also need to address the $38 million being allocated to police pensions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Vivian. Jeff, I think you're probably next. Is this Jeff Hallgren's request? Yeah. Did you want to speak now? Yeah, Jeff?
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, council, thank you very much, city manager. I want to address the council and the mayor, the city manager, and police chief, acting police chief, on regarding our police force and our, and the kind of restraint and the kind of sensitivity that you guys have shown over the course of the last month. I feel very strongly that we are on the right track. We are doing a terrific job with policing. I don't, I do not believe that we are, we have lost our way at all. I feel like the management that you, the mayor, and you, city manager, and the council have shown here under very difficult circumstances is restrained and objective, and I believe that we are doing a great job. I live in a very dangerous area. I live in, in the northwest quadrant of the city, and, and I feel very, very safe, given the, given the people that are there for our safety. I also believe that we are doing the right thing with our management of the officers in the schools. I feel that we have terrific people in the schools that are doing the job, and I just want to commend the council, mayor, city manager, and our police force, the men and women of our police force. I believe that we are on the absolute right track, and I would, I would commend you very much for the work that's been done, and I would encourage you to stay the course. Thank you very much. And I have, I have something else in the court, too, so.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Take it away.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, I think those are the only comments that we have at this point personally. Oh, we've got another one, okay. Thank you, Ruth. Chantel Davis, I think I read a letter from you earlier, did I not? Okay, Chantel, welcome.
I just wanted to say after the last comment that showing restraint during these demonstrations is the job of the police. I don't want us to lose focus with that. I don't want us to lose focus with that. It's not the police's job to use excessive force and to escalate situations. And so, it is literally their job, and I don't think that we should be handing out candy for them to be doing their job. I think we need to hold them accountable, because as many have expressed over the last year, we are not holding certain officers accountable for their excessive force and their treatment of people of color in our community. And as a white person, I know that I do not live with the same fears as many people in the community, but I will say that it is absolutely terrifying that other people in my community would support keeping an officer on the force who has taken up so much money and time and resources from the city to keep his job while it is obvious that it is a threat to people of color in our community. And I don't understand what is holding anybody back. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, and I think that that needs to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Okay, I believe those are the last speakers who would like to speak during this part of the agenda. So, let's move on to presentations. Did you want to, yeah, I've got your form on D-five. You want to speak to it now?
I'll speak to the item.
Now?
No.
Wait, okay, I had you down mark as D-five.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Very good. That'll work.
Okay, we have a very special presentation tonight. A proclamation, and I'd like to take the time, even though it may take just a couple of more minutes than normally, to read this, because it's such an important event, that this is the hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of the founding of Northern Illinois University. And so, bear with me as I read through this proclamation very proudly as a resident of the city of DeKalb and as an alum of NIU. Whereas, on the fifteenth day of July, eighteen ninety-five, DeKalb, Illinois was chosen as the site for the state's new normal school in Northern Illinois. And whereas, the city's founding fathers were largely responsible in their relentless lobbying and personal investment for making it so. And whereas, the city and NIU have grown and developed together in the one-hundred-and-twenty-five years since. And whereas, NIU is the area's largest employer and an influential producer of economic development and intellectual capital. And whereas, the university is a major provider of entertainment, cultural activities, and educational events, including the high-quality programming enjoyed by more than one-hundred-thousand people per week via Northern Public Radio. And whereas, it is also a provider of its own athletic events, as well as serving as host for local and statewide competitions. And whereas, NIU has brought high-speed fiber optic networks to the area and helped recruit new businesses with that valuable infrastructure. And whereas, NIU collaborates with organizations to extend their services, as in the partnership between the university and DeKalb Community Gardens. And whereas, NIU's partnership with the city of DeKalb has created mutually beneficial service agreements and greatly improved both the functioning and cost of services, such as the area's public transit system. Whereas, NIU produces through its graduates a huge, a large proportion of the community's leaders, as well as volunteers, who serve on countless boards and commissions. And whereas, the many thousands of students, faculty, and staff who have attended and worked at Northern Illinois University have enlivened our community for over a century. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby join with Northern Illinois University in celebration of its founding and the observance this year of its one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of DeKalb to be affixed this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty. Jerry Smith, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, we're honored to have the President of NIU, Lisa Freeman. Lisa, if you'd like to make a few remarks, I'd then like to have you come forward and receive this proclamation.
Mayor, as the President of Northern Illinois University, I'm so pleased to hear that resolution. I say thank you on behalf of the Husky family, and as we go through these challenging and unprecedented times, I know that NIU and DeKalb will come out stronger together, because we pursue collaboration, we're not afraid to have difficult conversations, and I look forward to another one-hundred-and-twenty-five years strong between NIU and DeKalb. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have to mildly compliment all of us.
Thank you. What is that?
Jerry? Jerry, we have some public comment letters that haven't been read into the record. You inadvertently skipped over that.
Email public comment letters.
Yes, and those are, and those are under item D, public participation.
Yeah, but you, we skipped over.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay, yeah. I had saved, I had put those inadvertently towards a D-five, a J-five, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. And I've asked City Man, or I've asked our Alderman, Bill Fanouken, to read a letter from Derek Van Buer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The TIF report should immeasurably concern the taxing bodies. The report details the gross mismanagement of the taxing body's taxes being diverted to questionable activities, especially the payment of salaries to city employees. For example, a school district paid for eighteen percent of the city manager's salary. One of the recommendations highlighted that the city does not even use basic accounting procedures in the accounts payable process for TIF invoices. If the city does not follow this process for TIF, doesn't mean the city doesn't follow basic accounting procedures for the city invoice is not related to TIF. Scary. Another recommendation is the standard procedure should be used in awarding TIF projects. You only need to look at the last three TIF projects to know the city has no standard procedures. The percentages of projects receiving TIF funds keep changing. These are TIF funds that could be surplus and be transferred back to the taxing bodies. Finally, the city should provide the public with what recommendations have been implemented. The city posted on its website with the TIF report the following, and this is a quote out of the report, from the city website, "The Ernst &amp; Young Audit Makes Some Recommendations for Process Improvement," City Manager Bill Nicholas stated. "I am pleased to report that many of these recommendations have already been implemented, but were not noted because they did not exist during the period of the audit, 2009 to 2018. The council's recent discussion on May twenty-six, 2020, of broad guidelines to be followed and evaluated and making TIF awards closely follows a number of these recommendations," end quote. "Hopefully, the city will provide the taxing bodies and the public the relevant timesheets of the city employees with payroll rates they are charging in TIF. We should have the ability to reconcile the amount charged at TIF from the city's timesheets. The information should be posted on the city's website. Furthermore, the taxing bodies should, could be concerned about the city's 2019 comprehensive annual report, the CAFR. The auditor's found deficiencies in internal controls, among other items. The city needs to fix its house quickly." Thank you. That's the end of Derek Van Buer's comments.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken, for reading that. You know, my wife watches these meetings, each and every council meeting, and she says, "Would you please stop shuffling papers so much?" And I said, "You know, just occasionally, once in a while, a meeting is such that I have to shuffle a few papers." And I apologize to Derek Van Buer for not getting him on at the proper time, and I also will apologize to Misty Haji Sheik, who sent in a reading, a letter, and I will read that, thusly. Misty says, "I lived in DeKalb from 2002 to 2019. I paid taxes there during the seventeen-year period. I was also a member of the county board from 2012 to 2019. I tried many times to get some kind of information on how my tax, including TIF, dollars were spent. There was and is something wrong at City Hall. I read the fiscal assessment, and I have a few comments. This entire document shows the city of DeKalb was arbitrary and capricious in who got TIF dollars and how much each entity received. It shows a total lack of any procedures or record-keeping. I believe that each of the nine taxing bodies should be made whole, and that there should be serious oversight on how the city proceeds. We are talking about millions of dollars that have been misspent." Page twenty-three, section six-point-five-point-five says in part, "Section eleven dash seventy-four-point-four-dash-three of the TIF Act stipulates, unless explicitly states, excuse me, unless explicitly states herein the cost of, cost construction of the new privately-owned buildings shall not be an eligible redevelopment project. Did Bemis, Cornerstone, and even the newest Pappus Development, the source of Nick Cronauer's lawsuit, qualify? Number three, page twenty-five, section six-point-five-point-two-point-two, TIF eligibility. We were not provided with a contemporaneous analysis establishing TIF eligibility of the Bemis incentive." And it also says, "The information provided does not enable us to clearly apportion expenses between renovation and new construction, and we are accordingly unable to conclude that the Bemis development incurred one-point-five million dollars in eligible expenses." Number four, "There is an additional question about the Bemis issue because the forgivable loan goes past the life of the TIF. Is this even legal? This entire document shows that the city of DeKalb was arbitrary and capricious in who got TIF dollars and how much each entity received. It shows a total lack of any procedures or record-keeping. I believe that since only eighty-five items were in the scope of Ernst &amp; Young's assessment, and there are so many items found that are clearly wrong and possibly even criminal, that further investigation needs to be done. In addition to my concerns, there needs to be serious oversight, since the recent audit of 2018 and 2019 shows that the numbers don't add up. There is something wrong at City Hall. I believe that ultimately, each of the nine taxing bodies should be made whole, and that there should be serious oversight on how the city proceeds. Signed, Misty Haji Sheik, formerly of 529 Park Avenue." And I tried to read that with the emphasis, that emphasis that Misty would have done. Now, have I missed anything before we move on? Any other letters? Yes, Alderman Morris.
I had someone reach out and say that they had a letter that was intended for this meeting.
What time did it come in?
I'm trying to verify. I think it was one of the, I think it was the second letter that I read at the last meeting.
Okay. Boy, this is, yeah, this is during the public hearing, which we're going to have. Yeah, we've got a public hearing coming up.
Okay, so it's for the public hearing, that one?
Yeah, right, right. No, I have that.
I think I'm good then, sorry.
Okay, we move right along. We deleted item F, the appointment of Joyce Stapesia, tonight. We move along, which is item G on your agenda, Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are enacted in one motion. There are no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, in which event the item will be removed. Is there any item on our Consent Agenda that anyone would like to have deleted? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to Consent, to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second? It's been moved by Alderman, who moved on that?
Tony Favor.
Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor, you'll need to read those items into the record, please.
I beg your pardon?
The Consent Agenda items, you'll need to read those into the record?
You've got to read the agenda.
Oh, I will read those, yes, I'm sorry. Consent Agenda, these are the items in which there's been a motion made and a second made on approving the Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of June twenty-two, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June twenty-two, 2020. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through July thirteen, 2020, in the amount of three million, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and seven cents. Number four, hospitality recovery program update. And number five, Resolution 2020 dash zero-six-five, authorizing the execution of a workers' compensation lump-sum petition in order in the amount of forty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and seven cents. Now that I have a motion and a second, and I've read the Consent Agenda, any further discussion? Ruth, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
The Consent Agenda is approved as printed. We now have one public hearing tonight, and I would like to open this public hearing at seven-thirty, excuse me, seven-twenty-six PM. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed demolition of nine-twelve Edgbrook Drive using community development block grant funding. I do have one letter prior to City Manager Nicholas making his comments on this. This letter is from Jessica Blevins, thirty-two-twenty Riverside Drive, Columbus, Ohio. "Hello, I work for Delta Gamma Fraternity Executive Office and manage the Delta Gamma property located at nine-seventeen Kimberly Drive, directly behind nine-twelve Edgbrook Drive. I support the demolition of the property, as it is a big safety concern for the women living in the Delta Gamma House. It's also an eyesore and brings down my property value. While I support the demolition, I am curious about the future plans for the property. Many NIU students live in the area, as the majority of sorority and fraternity houses are right there. What is the city planning to put in the building's place? How is the city planning to keep our members safe? How will my property value be impacted? Overall, my top concern is safety, but I am also concerned about how low our property is currently valued, especially for its size. Signed, Jessica Blevins." Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment during this public hearing? If not, I turn it over to our City Manager Nicholas for any comments he might have.
Just, I would say that I agree with the person who wrote the letter from the Delta Gamma Sorority. The council has, on a number of occasions, also agreed it is an eyesore. The council came into possession of this in two thousand, late two thousand seventeen, and has spent just minimal amount of money to board up first-floor windows and doors and to mow the yard and remove snow. And it remains uninhabitable, unsuitable for any rehabilitation. The business case has been made for the demolition, because the cost of rehabbing is greater than the cost of the demolition by far. And the process, which tonight is one piece, and involves a number of public participation moments, including a public meeting, as opposed to a public hearing, that was held on the site. Joanne Rouse, our community service coordinator, who's here tonight, has been relentless in going through these federal HUD-defined protocols and steps. We're getting very close to the point where we can look forward to the demolition of this building. As for what will be there, councils, previous councils have talked about a variety of things. I don't believe anybody in the hearings, meetings, community discussions, has wanted to see more high-density housing there. I believe open space would be welcome, just a little of it in that overall neighborhood. And who would ultimately maintain it, and what would be put in there? Would it just be grassed over? What would it be? How it would be supervised over time, managed? Those are questions the council will have to determine.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Kudos to Joanne Rouse from our community development department. Joanne, for all the Joanne, for all the work you've done on this, we really truly appreciate that. Kudos to you. After having heard City Manager Nicholas and his report, are there any members of the public present or any members of our city council who would like to make any additional Hearing on, I will close this public hearing at seven thirty PM. Now we move along to considerations. Our DeKalb Fire Department two thousand and nineteen annual report. I know our fire chief Jeff McMaster is really anxious to get a chance to speak to us tonight. With his introduction, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you very much, Mayor. He's been waiting anxiously. This, this report is a compilation that's done by many hands, but Chief McMaster is the, the final conductor of that, that symphonic action. And there's a lot of highlights that didn't appear in your background tonight. I encourage you to look at the report. At this point, I'm going to defer to Jeff McMaster for some comments that he has.
And Chief, if you'd make your way up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to come here. Thank you for reviewing the annual report. If you ever have any questions in the future, feel free to reach out. What I just want to extend is that the Fire Department is a, is a proud partner in this community. However, the Fire Department is extremely stretched thin. And what do I mean by that? We've had a steady trend going up over the last twenty-five years in, in calls. However, over the last two years, there has been a sharp incline. You could, you could see this with a twenty percent increase in call volume over the last two years. For fire and non-fire calls, that is up eight percent in the last two years. And in the last two years, we have seen our EMS or medical calls go up by twenty-five percent. This is a staggering pace. However, our staffing has remained pretty much in the same model as it has been for the last ten to twelve, ten to fifteen years. So, you're firefighters, as they're, they're making this, our model work, and what we are doing is we're being incredibly flexible as we go out and we respond to these calls. However, you will see that there is a, what we call simultaneous calls in which, over twenty-four hundred times this year and including while we were at this council meeting, all three fire stations were empty for extended amounts of time, of extended amounts of time without having, with having to call back other firefighters or having to call on other neighboring fire departments to help us out. That's happened over twenty-four hundred times. Now, with that twenty percent of EMS calls that the Fire Department, twenty percent that the Fire Department has been running as far as EMS calls, we are on the front lines of mental health and behavioral health, social services that aren't available to people, for substance abuse. We are at the front, and that's what's continuing to put the work, the work toll on the, on the Fire Department. Our budgeting, as we've continued to make, make work, our non-personnel operating budget has pretty much remained stagnant or shrunk within the last couple of years. So what we're asking is that we continue to make this work. We are a proud partner in this community, and we look forward to working with city staff, other city staff and, and the council in the future. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Chief McMaster? It was a very complete report, a lot of numbers, a lot of figures like that. We appreciate it. Alderman Favor.
I just want to say thank you to you and to the other firefighters, just especially now on the front lines with COVID. I know that there's, you know, the weekly reports that we get, that there's, you know, you're one of the first calls as to the, to the Fire Department for EMS service. So, just thank you and the, and the guys for being out there on the front line.
Will do, thank you.
I should say, not guys, team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Favor. Any other comments? Again, on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the citizens of the City of DeKalb, we thank you very much, Chief, for your leadership. Let, make sure you let the men and women of your department know how much we appreciate them, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we move along to item J on the agenda, resolutions. Our first resolution, twenty twenty dash zero six six, approving the adoption of the shared principles developed by the Illinois National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, that's the INNAACP State Conference, and the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, ILACP, by the City of Police, City of DeKalb Police Department. I'd entertain a motion to get this on the floor, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This was referenced in the COW discussion. The, the background to the development of these principles was presented in your background tonight. I won't repeat that, but I think it's very important to look at all of these principles. And as Alderman Morris mentioned earlier, they're, they're significant, they're not just words. A commitment to this holds you accountable for these words, which includes a lot of detail with respect to goals, performance goals, not specific to who's going to do what, but having to do with how, how you translate these foundational values into action. And it does talk about diversity training and de-escalation training and, and the values that are a part of community policing and so forth. I, I would say that this is actually, and this is just my opinion, a, a basis for further discussion, at least equal to what the HRC has presented to you. This has been honed for two years by both the NAACP and the Association of, of Chiefs of Police, who first engaged in two thousand and fourteen and developed this, first articulated it in two thousand and eighteen, and it's been refined since. So what you're getting is really the, the best version of what has evolved over the last six years now. So I, I think if you're looking for calls to, to social justice, this is a very important statement in that respect.
Any discussion? We're being asked to approve this? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Number two, approval in omnibus form of resolutions authorizing community development block grant, CDBG, year two thousand and twenty, public services funding agreements as follows. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six seven, Children's Learning Center in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six eight, elder care services in the amount of nine thousand dollars. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero six nine, Hope Haven in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven zero, Safe Passage in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. And resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven one, Voluntary Action Center in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars, for a total amount of sixty-nine thousand dollars. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, any comments?
Just, we strongly recommend you pass this. A portion of our CDBG monies are allocated through this action, if you so choose, for our public services that are on the front line every day. And those public services, if you remember from the COW, if you had a chance to look at the detail of what we are spending on community services in two thousand and twenty, this is just a very, very small piece of the roughly one point three million dollars that the city is spending this year in social services, which I should have mentioned earlier. It's an extraordinary, it's, it's the largest allocation we've ever had. It's twenty-five percent increase over last year.
Alderman Morris.
I just have a question. I want to understand better, for the CLC, for the subsidies to low-income families for transportation of children between their homes and/or school and daycare, I guess I'm just curious, are they, they're at daycare, so they're open now? Yes?
Daycare is open for emergency, you know, essential programs on a very limited basis. So there's some, it's obviously more noted than it was. The rent runs from April first to March thirtieth. So it's anticipated, hopefully, school will open that session over the, or two months.
And, and so hopefully theoretically, if they're not open now, they just have that money to use for more support later.
And there's a lot more service than we have.
Right.
I think you were satisfied with that answer, Alderman Morris. In case anybody did not hear, our Community Development Director, Joanne Rouse, explain and answer Alderman Morris's question. Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Upstein.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
That resolution passes. Number three, resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven two, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive, for the Hillside Restaurant, located at one twenty-one North Second Street, in the amount of eighteen thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal before you tonight is one now of three that you've looked at in this calendar and fiscal year, and it is consistent with the principles, the architectural improvement program, and also reflective of the tighten-up that's been done by the council on the TIF program since before the forensic audit was, was released, but probably more obvious to the public at this point. And we recommend the request as presented to you in the background.
Any further discussion or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Number four, resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven three, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for public transit funding from the Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program from July one, two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, in an amount not to exceed six million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand and five hundred and thirty, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Let me repeat that number again, six million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite simply, if you don't approve this, we fold our transit program, and the two transit member, members of our transit team are on the, on the bricks looking for a job. This is it. Every year we pass the IGA, which is a premise that, you know, the state has to see the contract, basically. We're going to give you the money, and you're going to spend it in the way that you're supposed to. That's what this is. There'll be more follow-on actions that the council will take, as you have in previous years, as, as the year goes along.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution passes. Thank you. We now move to resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven four, which initially was, we were asked to remove this from the agenda, but given comments from our city manager regarding the importance of this project, we moved to defer it and table it until our next meeting, or at least one of our next meetings. And that is resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven four, awarding a bid to Seven Brothers Painting Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred dollars for painting and repair of the South Water Tower, with staff authority to approve change orders for a total project cost up to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. To get this on the table for discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Favor, and now I'm going to turn this over to City Manager, well, let's, we have a couple of speakers who would like to speak. Mark Gettle, if you would come up to the podium, please. Identify yourself, who you're with, and be happy to take your comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council Manager Nichols. I've been here before. I represent the Painters Union in DeKalb. I've been here twenty-five years. A long time, I've been in the union for forty-one years. So I'm getting close to the end. So I'll be done hopefully soon. Anyways, I'm also elected official, I think I've discussed that, I've been on the city council in North War for seventeen years. I know about budgets, I know about contracts, I understand where you're at with the budget, I understand your dilemmas with making sure you have enough revenue for your, your community. However, it has come to Painters District Council thirty's attention that you will be voting on painting your South Water Tower tank, and you are considering awarding this contract to Seven Brothers Painting, a foreign-owned, out-of-state company. We strongly encourage you to review your, the background of this company before any decision is finalized, and perhaps consider awarding the contract to a local company who contributes back to the community. Local companies contribute back to communities in various ways, including property tax, income tax, and as well as their impact on state sales tax. Painters District Council thirty strongly is in opposition of letting the painting contract out to Seven Brothers out of Michigan. Seven Brothers Painting has a long history of worker exploitation, fines, penalties, and serious injuries, including the death of an employee. According to the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, which is OSHA, Seven Brothers Painting has five serious violations and four other violations, resulting in fines of over seventeen thousand dollars. That's just recently. After the investigations were conducted by OSHA, one of these violations involved a fall resulting in employee's death. And I got all the detachments and all my data I sent to City Manager Nicholas for all my backup. Furthermore, Seven Brothers Painting does not carry proper work and compensation insurance coverage to, for the above-rescured citation, and I sent it to bill in Ohio. This is a violation of Michigan law, violation of Illinois law, violation of just about every state in, in our country. According to the National Labor Relations Board Case Database, Seven Brothers Painting has been investigated twice recently for violating collective bargain agreements, and more recently, Seven Brothers Painting violated Illinois state law, specifically the Prevailing Wage Act. Under the Prevailing Wage Act, companies are required to pay employees the prevailing wage established area for work that's performed in DeKalb. Simply put, this company does not do that. This company hires undocumented workers out of, out of our country and exploits them. It's very easy to figure it out. We'll figure it out, state will figure it out, and there'll be, there'll be complaints, and I'm going to tell you, as I've been doing this for so long, they'll be fined. City council members should also know that Seven Brothers Painting is located in Shelby Township, Michigan, and is the, is only registered to transact business within the state of Michigan. Plus, Seven Brothers does not have a active drug-free workplace program at the present time. Seven Brothers is not reg, is registered as a foreign, out-of-state company, corporation, and is not registered to do business in the state of Illinois. and is not registered to do business in the state of Illinois. Here we go. DeKalb workers are facing unprecedented unemployment currently. We're at twenty percent unemployed in, in DeKalb. That is why the Illinois Department of Labor has enacted the Illinois Preference Act. The Illinois Preference Act was passed by the state lawmakers, signed by the governor ten years ago. So when the unemployment goes up past five percent, that any contracts let out on municipal, you know, contract, that they have to employ ninety percent of their workers from Illinois. This company has no workers that live in Illinois currently at this time. The law that passes, putting local workers to work, is financially really healthy for a municipality. It profits from high employment rate, as working people spend more money, pay state taxes, pay local taxes, buy real estate, and have higher, higher incomes at a higher rate and a higher income tax. All this goes back to the city of DeKalb. And we are opposed to, as opposed to foreign, out-of-state corporations that exploit their workforce. Painter's District Council Thirty's members who live in your community participated in an accredited apprenticeship training safety program. We are like a community college. It took us years to get our accreditation. So when our apprentices go through our school, they finish their program, they're ready for these types of work, and they're ready, they're, they're safety prepared. Unlike Seven Brothers, we at Painter's District Council Thirty take safety training very seriously. And our training programs provide the industry with high-skilled painters who provide the highly, highest quality of work. On the other hand, Seven Brothers Painting has a track record of cheating its workforce, exposing them to unsafe conditions, and violating the Illinois prevailing wage law.
Because you tried to wrap it up, Mark.
Yeah, I got, in conclusion, it is our belief that Seven Brothers also misclassifies its workforce and resulting in another Illinois labor violation. Companies like Seven Brothers are bad for our country, bad for our state, and bad for the city of DeKalb. So we ask you to reject their bid and to let the bids out, put them out again for a rebid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We do have one letter that I would like to read, and this is from J.J. Wet, 127 Tilton Park Drive in DeKalb. Dear Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your time. As most of you know, I am very pro-union because of prevailing wage. However, it goes beyond that. Unions also provide safety regulations. Regarding Resolution 2020-074, awarding a bid to Seven Brothers Paving, A Painting Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred dollars for painting and repair of the South Water Tower with staff authority to approve change orders for a total project cost up to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand nine fifty-four. Seven Brothers Painting is a non-union and extremely unsafe company to work for. Employees are ten ninety-nine contractors that are mostly undocumented individuals responsible for paying their own taxes. Not to mention that the company has had several accidents due to not following safety regulations put in place to keep their laborers safe. Seven Brothers Painting is a cheaper company to offer the bid to. But do we really want a company that cuts corners and endangers their laborers to save the city money? I sure don't. Signed, J.J. Wet. Now, since we had a motion on the floor to table this and to move this to another meeting, would it be appropriate not to have any discussion at this point, or would anyone like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, a point of information, that motion was defeated?
Oh, that, that's right. That motion was defeated. I'm sorry.
So this is the appropriate time to discuss that.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. So this is a lie, so my, excuse my comment regarding the fact that this was deferred to another time. City manager Nicholas?
Lot of information. I'll address some of it when I know. Brian Faber, who's our director of utilities, is, is on vacation tonight, so he was not able to attend. So he's the source of most of my information on the process and also on the company. But there's also additional, there's some information that was presented to us by Dixon Engineering, who had performed the initial inspection for us of the tower itself back in the spring. Let me just give you a little context, and then we can move to what you want to do or not want to do with the bids. The tower is a nineteen eighty-four tower. It's one of four. It's two million gallons, one of the larger elevated types of tanks. And it has performed well for us. It also serves the, the high-capacity development area along Gerler Road. So we have two new companies obviously going in there. And the painting takes two, three months inside. This is inside and outside painting, and also some, some steel repairs that were specked and, and bid. And once the company on the north side of the road gets going, it's not a good time to take this tower out of, out of operation. And when the company on the south side of Gerler gets going, it won't be a good time to take it out. So we thought we'd get ahead of the game. This came to me in the February, March period, and I acceded to the water department's request to go out to bid. They did. And the, at the end of May, and then the resulting bids were the three that you see on page thirteen of your, your background. So all three of these are out-of-state companies, as it turns out. And, you know, we, we're not allowed, unless we be bid rigging, to go out and solicit bids. So we do our best to provide a package that we hope people will find attractive and will want to give us a competitive price on. And we hope that those companies will be responsible, especially to the, the performance expectations in state law that Mark defined for you, whether it be prevailing wage, whether it be, and prevailing wage, by the way, isn't just the, the dollar wage. It's also the benefits that go with that, and those are defined in the prevailing wage enactments by the state statute. So those would have to be checked. There would have to be certified payroll, whoever got this, whether it was a union company or a non-union company. So here we have a wide range of, of prices. You could proceed on the basis of what you've heard tonight to go to the second bidder. We don't have the, the money allocated for that. You can amend the budget and go in that direction if you wish. There have been violations as well. I, I'm not going to tonight be able to say, this is according to Brian Faber, who I trust, and he's been a man of integrity, and I believe that he knows what he's talking about. But I, I believe that there are some questions about number two. I don't know frankly, I haven't heard anything one way or another about biking, except that they're out-of-state as well. So the possibility of rebidding this is also on, on your table. It took us thirty-five, forty-five, you know, almost sixty days to get to this point. I think if we go out to bid, it will be hard-pressed to get this done. We might be able to get some of it done before we got the inside later. Temperature is very important. Painting is still inside too, so we're, if we're going to do this, I think we have to act pretty quickly. So the question to you is, do you want to accept the low bid, which was the recommendation that came from Brian? Do you want to waive the low bid and by majority go to the second, or supermajority go to the second bid, knowing that that's also out-of-state and also non-union and has some violations? Do you want to throw out the bids altogether, which is okay according to the specs? It requires a supermajority vote, but you can do that as well. And we could try again. Then it'll be up to people like Mark to go out and see if you can get a contractor that you will like in the process.
Yeah, you know, I'm not a painter. I don't know that much about painting water towers. But what I heard tonight confuses me. First of all, I trust Brian Faber. He's been in our employ for many, many years. He knows water. So when something comes forward, and I look at this, it, it looks legitimate, if you will. The bidding process, and I do not know the logistics of what happened here, but it would have been good to have a local bidder in here. I mean, we've looked at road contracts and street contracts in the past and have been very, very sensitive to those local folks who want to build our real roads, build our streets, pave our streets, et cetera. And then we had a gentleman tonight suggesting that the Seven Brothers Painting low bid was extraordinarily high. So, you know, I wonder if we did open this up, and we, let's just presuppose we open it up, we only want local bidders. Are we going to come in less than seven-ten? Are we going to come in less than seven-ten? Questions that I, as a layman and not a painter, would ask. With that, Alderman Morris, you had a point that you wanted to raise.
I wanted to ask, how long does it take, take to paint the water tower?
It's about three months, because we're doing inside and out, and we're also going to have to, once we drain the tank, we're going to have to do, you can see there's some interior repairs that are necessary on hatches and safety repairs that, not the companies identify, but the Dixon Engineering identify as part of the spec writing for this. And they had people go in and, and do some assessment.
I think that although I would be in a hurry to get this underway for our new projects south of town, I, I think it would be very good if we could rebid this. I realize we may not come in with a dramatically different number, as Alderman Faber and I were assessing this earlier today. He pointed out that some of what, we weren't necessarily comparing the same-sized water towers with some of these lower bids. So obviously, that's an important factor. They have, you know, two million versus another size water tower is a huge deal. But I still think, based on what we're hearing, it's worth rebidding at this point.
Do we re, do we rebid and allow none of these other parties in to bid? Is that what, what I hear you saying, or are we?
You, you can't, you can't say they can unless you establish in a bid specs, something like a local preference. We will only, we will only look at state.
I see, I see our city attorney, he just said so. Okay. Alderman Faber?
Absolutely not. You know, it would be nice if I was bidding on something and I knew how much it sold for, to then go back and say, I'll give you a dollar more.
Oh, yeah.
We opened this up on May twenty-ninth. It was open for almost a month. It's published everywhere. Anybody looking for work knows to check municipal sites. It was out there. Nobody local bid on it. There's not a union shop that bid on it at all. Of the three that we have, so to your suggestion about the information we heard, one, there was a death. I found one death, and it's horrible. You don't want to see safety. You always want to see safety paramount. You don't want to see somebody who's working in unsafe manner. We want to protect our employees. We hope companies take care of their employees as well. That was four years ago. What I didn't see is I didn't see any condemnation of the company that they were at fault for the death. I didn't see any, I wasn't able to see all the safety violations.
There were seven.
But I was told, but I was told that in an email that some of those safety violations were, were lodged by union, trying to get in and trying to unionize them, as, be it as it may. So, and then, some of the emails that I received was, we shouldn't even use this company, but this comp, you know, Lake Forest is going to do a five-hundred-thousand-gallon tank. And they were going to pay two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars for it. Fifty-six thousand dollars over budget by guess who? This same company. The city of DeKalb is going to do a two-million-gallon tank. It's four times larger. We're at seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. We are fifty-one-thousand dollars under the engineering budget. So no, I don't think we need to go out and rebid this. But I will put it to my fellow council members. If you want to award this to a different company, then let's go to number two, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. A hun, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars over the engineering budget. And I want to hear your explanation of why we would go above and beyond the engineering budget for a job. We can't go local, because nobody local bid on the job. So those are my comments.
And I, I believe we've worked with Dixon Engineering before, and they were recommending that this low bid be accepted. So we've worked with both of them before. Okay, further comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not sure this is, is it, can you hear me?
It's on, it's on. John Dennyhugh, our city attorney.
You, you mentioned earlier the possibility of going out for bids and specifying a local company. You need to know that there is case law where a, a public entity has chosen the second lowest bidder because they were in the community and they thought they would bring more back to the community. And our Illinois Supreme Court has held that that's not an appropriate thing to consider in determining the lowest responsible, responsible bidding. It's a, it's, it's a school district involving, I think it's a Doyle Construction Company or something. It's, Illinois Supreme Court cases held that. So going local, and solely going local is probably somewhat dangerous.
Thank you. Not the first time I've asked something that turned out to be dangerous, that's for sure. Any other comments? Alderman Perkins?
So this isn't, this isn't the first time we've painted that, right? Is there, is there a benchmark? Do we have a, a compare, a comparable?
Yeah, the, this, this tank is, we did, we did another one of our four tanks a couple of years ago. I, I, I'm sorry, this isn't my area, but, you know, I, I was told that in the, it's in their background as well for tonight's meeting.
Okay. I was, I was just going down that path more from the perspective of the two-fifty assertion to seven-fifty.
Always. Well, it, it was a smaller tank, and, and Alderman Faber noted that, so, yeah, I think it was, what, five-hundred-thousand gallon tank.
And it's a different design than our tank as well.
Shorter, and it's probably a stem type.
It is the, it is the thin stem. It is not apples-to-apples.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins, and Alderman Faber. Alderman Morris?
I, I mean, so just a few weeks ago, I had my house painted inside, and I got three different quotes. And I had one that was about three thousand, one that was about six thousand for the same project. So, I mean, that's, you know, in my, in my story here, this is like a fifty percent change in amount. And if we don't even, if no one right now is able to say, hey, this is the amount that we paid last time we got this painted, and we can't pull that up, and we can't say, here's the real comparison, because that would be apples-to-apples. Alderman Faber, that's exactly what you're looking for, is what did we pay last time? So what are we willing to pay this time? Yeah, that's all.
Alderman Faber?
No, I'm not. Lake Forest is out of the, out of the question. It, we, we paid a company to do an engineering analysis of what the tank needs and what needs, you know, and how it needs to be done. They put together what that proposal was from the engineering team. We sent that in part of our request for bid to get all of that work done. Three companies provided a bid. So, again, if you want to go with number two, I'm willing to go with number two. But I need you to explain to me why you would pay two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars more than the engineering proposal that was put together.
Alderman, our city manager Nicholas?
I have a proposal for you. I proposed you table this for two weeks. Two weeks is better than not at all this year. And in that two weeks, I'd like to know myself more about the, the safety violations that Mark has outlined. Yeah, I have, but I mean, Yeah, I have, but I mean, we, we ought to look at them and, and, uh, and let, uh, give us a chance to have Brian Favor here to speak to those and, uh, because he's been involved in this process, uh, the process of painting tanks for a long time, so.
Okay, it's been suggested by, uh, yeah, by Alderman, by, uh, city manager Nicholas that we, uh, table this for another couple of weeks. Alderman Smith, you wanted to make a comment?
I just looked it up, uh, 2018, Bill, uh, City's North Water Tower, 553,000 sub hundred with over just what it looks like.
But is it the same size?
Yeah, it's a 2 million.
And the company?
Uh.
So, it's LC United.
L and T Painting, does that sound right? Yeah.
Number two. Okay. LC United, back there, Tracy.
Yeah, it's L and T Painting, I think you're correct.
Another, another, we have a problem.
Alderman Verbic.
Moved to postpone until July 27th, 2020.
Second.
You asking a postponement then?
Yes, please.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic and seconded by Alderman Morris that we postpone consideration of resolution 2020 dash 074, awarding the bid for the painting and repair of South Tower, South Water Tower. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. That resolution is move that to our next meeting. Thank you, Mark. Number six, resolution 2020 dash 075, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Dixon Engineering Incorporated for coating inspection and construction engineering for painting and repair to the South Water Tower in an amount not to exceed $51,500. Motion, please. So moved.
I think we move that we postpone this for two weeks also in, in relation to the previous resolution.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, sec, uh, that we postpone.
Sorry, second.
And second by Alderman Morris that we postpone this resolution until our next meeting. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That resolution is postponed until our next meeting. Number seven, resolution 2020 dash 076, awarding a bid to West Side Tractor Sales for the purchase of a John Deere 624L series 4WD loader in the amount of $189,960. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. Smaller numbers here, but, uh, pretty good bidding turnout. We, um, don't often turn over a, a loader, uh, large piece of equipment. They're pretty durable. We've had this one for 20 years. It's have, it, there are maintenance problems that won't go away, so for, uh, the reaching it has to do and so forth, we, we believe there are safety issues that just won't be repaired with the technology that's available. However, it could be available for, like, uh, scraping snow from the airport and around uh, teehangers and such, and so, uh, we believe it still has some use. But, uh, we had budgeted, uh, the council had approved the budget that included, uh, for Public Works, uh, a new loader. The, uh, Public Works, uh, went out for bids. As you can see in the background, uh, there were four bidders. Uh, one of them, uh, the low bidder, uh, price was right, but, uh, there were some considerable deviations from our specifications, and, uh, on occasion, we will consider those deviations if the manufacturer is aware of something, a better technique, and it's, it's incorporated in their equipment, uh, than, better technique than we'd imagined. But in this case, that, that wasn't so, and, uh, so we are now recommending the, the low bidder. We're recommending the, the next to the lowest bidder, which is, uh, John Deere, and, uh, they were the only one of the four bidders that actually met all of our specifications without any recommended deviations from those, and, uh, we feel that that's the right way to go. What we'd like to do tonight is the same thing we did with the ambulance and the large, uh, dump truck that the council approved about six weeks ago, and that is, uh, approve, so we can lock in the price, approve the bid, and then we'll bring back on the 27th a leasing package that, uh, we've already been discussing with Tech attempt leasing, which, as you know, is that company we've been working with, uh, aside from Enterprise, which does smaller equipment, uh, fleet cars and SUVs and such, which we've been working with, but, uh, this company does specifically large, large vehicles and, and equipment.
So, what you're asking city council to do tonight is to reject the Deucen bid, which is the low bid, but because of, uh, the fact that specifications were not adhered to, the council should award the contract to John Deere in the amount of 189,960. Is that correct?
Correct.
Does that align with the motion in the second on the floor? Okay, good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. That resolution passes. Resolution 2020 dash 077, approving a law enforcement embedded social worker agreement with Northwestern Medicine Ben Gordon Center. Uh, this was discussed quite a bit, uh, during the COW, but, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion on that resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, you described this in pretty, pretty good detail.
Recommend your approval. Uh, we'll learn a lot from this. We'll learn what, uh, how lines can be drawn, uh, on the scene of a certain type of a call, uh, where maybe the social worker can, can handle it by himself or herself, uh, or what type of interactions necessary with foreign police officers, and I think that's the best way of learning is to do it.
Good, good, yeah, I think this should be exciting. Any further comments? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Not present.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
That resol, resolution passes. Thank you. Now we move along to ordinances. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. Moving to ordinances, first reading, we do have one. Ordinance 2020 dash 045, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2020 budget, motor fuel tax fund 210. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas?
This is all good news. Got some more money, more motor fuel tax money. Uh, we need to put it to work. Uh, it's, uh, going to be very helpful on, uh, the building of Afton Road. As you can see, uh, there are, uh, some engineering and, and, uh, right away acquisition you've already approved, but, uh, we're, we're looking to pay some bills. Also, uh, intersection improvements, uh, at 23 and Gerler ultimately would be part of this, and there should be a little leftover, uh, whether it's this year or next year to put into our street maintenance program. This is, this is a good thing. There's a, another state allocation that we're looking for, which will probably come through the rebuild Illinois bonds, which is going to come to us in the form of MFT money as well, uh, through the good offices of, uh, representatives, Demmer and Keiker, uh, and that's coming soon as well, so I'll probably back with another one, but.
Yeah, a lot of good things are falling into place for that development down south, for sure. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this on first reading. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That motion passes on first reading.
Like to move that we waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve this this evening. Any further discussion?
Jerry, I'd just like to make note if I may, uh, one of the items is the expenditure on the engineering for the Fairview Drive Bike Path. I'd like to make mention that, uh, Kishawaki Kiwanis Club has pledged 25, $20,000 towards that project.
Wonderful, great. I know they've been asking a couple of the members, what's happening with that? So, I'm glad to hear that.
They have, and now, Jerry, you can report to them that, uh, we've taken a step.
Right, good. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. Now we move to reports and communications. This allows each and every member of our council and my, the mayor and, uh, the city manager to make any final comments before we move into an executive session. First ward, Alderman Carolyn Morris.
Um, I'll be brief. I'm going to hold a Zoom ward meeting on July 21st at 7:00 PM, and I'll post about that on my Facebook page in case I have double booked something. Um, next, I, I want us as a council to be aware of the fact that eviction is still looming problem, and for some people, they are, you know, it's not looming, it's real. Uh, so it's, it's a growing issue right now, and we need to kind of look at that and see if there's anything that we can do as a city, and, um, I've heard about the common, uh, I'm sorry, common lease. Um, and of course, there are different understandings when different people say that, of what that means and what that looks like, because we have one, um, and I believe the city manager mentioned it, but, uh, there, there are versions of the common lease floating as ideas in the community that, um, offer more protection for renters and offer the opportunity for renters to basically get their money back when, um, landlords don't provide basic necessities. So, that, that's out there. I just wanted to share it with you all. Um, and Zoom for these meetings, I think that seems to be the prevailing method right now, and I think we really need to return to having this returned to. I say, we did one time, but we need to be able to have this accessible to people on Zoom. We're always eager to have community participation, and we've really never seen better participation than when it was on Zoom. I understand it'll be new and difficult and challenging to, um, work through, but we can do it. And, um, I just wanted to address very briefly, uh, systemic racism versus regular racism. And we had some comments today about, um, how, how great all of these various police officers are, and they are, and we are proud to have them, and we are thrilled that we have such an amazing police force, but we have a system that is not, we have issues with one officer, and I think I read those comments earlier today, and someone else spoke to those comments. We have issues with one officer that we really need an answer from the city on. I don't know what's going on with that, and I don't know why we have, it hasn't been addressed. So, I'm going to publicly ask myself, why hasn't Officer Weiss, why hasn't anything happened with that yet? Um, and then, we had comments addressing systemic racism versus just racism, and the person went on to say how great the police were and all of that, but that's not what systemic racism is. That's individual racism. When we're saying that people are good, people are good, that would be racism, but we do have systemic racism because we have not fixed the structures that are in place to make sure and to break down the racism that is built into the system. So, that's all.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Second ward, Alderman.
Do you want an answer on that? I can tell you, yeah. It was in February, and the, and the council and the community knew what the result of the investigation was, which went to the state police and then went to the state's attorney and before, appear before a grand jury, and there were no charges brought. Uh, and then, uh, former interim police chief Patrick Gallo reached, uh, an agreement with, uh, legal counsel, our legal counsel, legal counsel for the officer, uh, and the result was a 30-day suspension without pay, uh, and there was a provision that, uh, there also had to be a mandatory, um, training. Uh, because of COVID, he, some of that has been accomplished and some of it still remains to be done, and it has to be satisfactorily done. So, as I understand it, we're week to week to know whether we can complete that training with the same trainer or we have to do something else, but, um, that has not gone away, and, uh, it is being tracked now by acting chief Riddell, who's very much aware of what the, the, uh, agreement was, uh, back in February. So, uh, nothing hidden here, it's, but it's good to ask, and I think I'm happy to inform the council of that.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question, council? I apologize. Um, so, to ask the question that everyone wants to know, that the people are pressing, is there any logistical way, like within the confines of the laws that we have in place in our city and agreement that we've made through legal counsel? Can Officer Weiss be let go?
Uh, I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, for, for the same conduct, no, he's already been disciplined for that. Uh, that being said, however, that does stay on his record, of course, and it could be an aggravating factor, of course, we're here to do something in the future that causes him to be disciplined. That's certainly an aggravating factor that could be taken into account as to determine what discipline happens to him at that time, but, but it's, the disciplinary matter is over. He, he served as, while he's in the process of, of completing it, I understand, uh, and, but you can't go back and, and change your mind, uh, after he's already been disciplined.
And so, if we were to choose to say, okay, we won't have police with this sort of record, and moving forward, choose to change our parameters of who we keep on the force, then he could be let go?
I don't think it can be retroactive, but it can be prospective. Am I correct?
Yeah, uh, you would have to find cause and reasons to discharge them.
New information.
With our union contract. If, if you were, make sure, what you're saying, if you went back and looked at the history of every police officer and found someone that you didn't, some incidents that you were particularly troubled about, could you go back in time and then fire for them for those incidents that may have happened years ago or maybe at another department? Uh, you, you would have to go through our union contract, and that'd be very difficult if not, if not impossible.
Thank you so much.
Second ward, Alderman, Bill Fanouken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make, uh, some comments regarding, uh, COVID. Uh, COVID-19 is not going to go away anytime soon. I'm going to ask that everybody wears your mask and wear it correctly, covering both your mouth and nose. There were several people here in the audience tonight that only had it over their mouth and not over their nose, and that concerns me greatly. Uh, the increases in the number of cases in some southern states largely lie with the lack of individuals not wearing their masks, not practicing social distance, whether inside or outside. You know, there've been a number of cases that have been reported from people out on the beach, that, uh, that's how they've contracted it. Uh, and if we're going to avoid the necessity of retreating backwards in the phases, we're going to need to make sure that you wear your mask, you wear it correctly, do social distancing, and as the CDC says, wash your hands. You know, we've only gone through, not even, well, just four months of it today, I think, is really when the announcement came down from the governor's office. And unless we all act better, it's going to get worse before it gets better when the vaccine comes out and go from there. So, I'm going to ask everybody to please, it isn't just your protection, it's everybody else's protection, and particularly the, the, uh, younger demographics of the community. I'd hate to see us do some of the things that I read about in other college towns where they have COVID parties, and everybody tosses a couple of bucks, and the first one that gets it wins the pot. That's not very smart thinking. Thank you.
Third ward, Alderman, Tracy Smith. Third ward Alderman Tracy Smith.
Uh, guess on the, let's go to the positive side for a while. Projects in DeKalb are all looking up. I drive them every day. Old Navy, I think the sign's going up here very soon. Canes, I was amazed how quickly they tore it down. They've got the underground done and I think they're going to pour concrete. The Paffus Project 23 in Oakland, they're doing the underground work rather quickly. Downtown, the, I hear a tenant has moved in or is in the process of moving at the building at Second and Lincoln in the lower floor. The restaurant at Third and Lincoln, I haven't talked to the Weavers lately recently, but is moving along rather quickly. I've watched a few of the workers down there. So those are positive things. Those are positive spins for the city of DeKalb as far as some projects that we've moved forward with. That's it.
Thank you, Tracy. Yes, we've got so many good things happening in our community, for sure. Fourth ward Alderman Greg Perkins.
Real short, and then it was great discussion tonight. It was great to see all the, the energy and the, the opinions and thoughts. Hope we can keep that moving forward.
Thank you, Greg. Fifth ward Alderman Scott McAdams.
I'm happy to announce that the Hometown Association of Realtors was awarded a 1,000, has awarded 1,000 National Association of Realtors Community Rebuilding Grant to assist with the construction and completion of the planned Unity mural at the lagoon, which we are looking to do in the next few months. The area in the underpass was tagged with a lot of graffiti and we've decided to replace the graffiti with a beautiful mural celebrating the unity of the community.
Thank you, Scott. Sixth ward Alderman Mike Verbic.
I'm also hosting a ward meeting coming up on Wednesday, July 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the community room of the police department. Look forward to talking with everyone then.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Tony Favor, seventh ward.
Yeah, I'll just echo the comments earlier that, you know, from the COW, we know that we have additional meetings to, to hold. I think, again, I think we have, we all have ideas on how we'd like to go forward and opportunities to discuss those.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. I do have a couple of comments. This weekend, the author of a local blog, DeKalb Issues, posted this. And please council and the public take note of what he said. Quote, Mayor Jerry Smith not only has been silent on crime, but has done nothing to alleviate the shootings and murders which have been increasing exponentially in the city of DeKalb during his tenure as mayor. Smith, along with his boss, city manager Bill Nicholas, whose salary increased $30,000 in 2020, have sat silently on the sidelines doing nothing while our community continues to suffer human lives. Interestingly, the first posting following those comments was as follows, from a person by the name of Chris Luna. I believe that we need to work on having a better and safer community. But DeKalb has been working on having more of minority groups moving in and helping us. I've lived here for 30 years and so, and I'm very happy to see more minority around here. I know that Dr. Bill, Mr. Bill, is working hard to make this a better place that people can get a job. Well, those that really want to work and not a lazy bump at home. I know him from Kish and I put my trust in him 100%. Let me close by this, you know, I seldom respond to social media posts, both those with a positive or negative point of view. As a matter of fact, I embrace what local Facebook and blog traffic are doing. They're providing forums to, for folks to speak out on many issues of the day. But I'm getting a bit tired of those, especially those from this Issues blog, who seemingly and continually make claims that this is a do-nothing council kowtowing to our city manager. Gosh, when this statement, that this mayor and this council are sitting silently on the sidelines on crime, where has this blogger been? I've said before and I'll emphatically repeat myself tonight, this council is a top-notch collection of top-notch citizens who are trying to do the right thing. We often argue, disagree, vote differently. But I feel when consensus is reached, we all walk away knowing that we have deliberated to the best of our ability. I'm proud to be this community's mayor and proud to be serving with you. I do believe together that we are making a positive difference. City manager Nicholas?
No report.
We are being asked to meet in executive session. So I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we recess into executive session. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
We are adjourned and we will move into executive session and we're going to continue to meet in this room. Thank you very much. This is, this meeting of the city council is in recess.